Can you hear me?
This meeting is being recorded.
Yes, we can hear you.
Cool, thanks. I'm not getting my camera to work right now. I'm sorry. I'm gonna keep troubleshooting.
Of course. So, we're ready to call the meeting to order. I will call the meeting of the Titan Commission on Disability to order at four thirty-six to be exact, according to my phone. First, item business before we even get into anything else is if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do any introductions, I just want to remind those in the room and anybody assumed that this meeting is being recorded. It is not live. We do have folks on Zoom live with us right now and it will be uploaded to YouTube. And we will have time for public input. If there are any questions, we'll get to that point. So, thank you all in advance. If we could acknowledge who we have as members of the Titan Commission on Disability. I will begin by saying that our liaison, Kepin Chico, will not be joining us this afternoon. We have one member on Zoom and that is.
Jennifer Dushkowsky.
And then we have a member to my left, Kevin.
Kevin Smith, member.
And to my right.
Nicole Mallon, member.
And Jonathan Gale, member and chair and ADA coordinator for the town of Titan. So, thank you very much for your participation this afternoon. We must go right into the agenda.
So, first item, old business, welcome new COD member.
Yep, so for the new COD member, so that everyone is clear, welcome Jen Dushkowsky back to the COD. Jen was a member a while back and needed to take some time off and is now back and joined us. And we welcome her participation and her voice on the COD. So, Jen, I know you're on Zoom and thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm glad to be back.
Thank you.
Ready for next item?
Yep.
It is elementary and middle school events, activities, and workshops.
So, with regard to elementary events, activities, and workshops, right now, there's still been conversation had with the role and responsibility of the ADA coordinator and or the ADA commission with regards to what we do in and with the schools and whom we address at the schools. There's a question mark as to what we're not going to be getting into with regard to specific asks as me as the ADA coordinator with any of the special ed organizations or the PTO within the school. However, there's still a question mark as to what my role would be with regard to employees in the school who are asking for resource assistance. So, if there are asks from the school, and this is why I'm saying it's changing, through the PTO or any of the other organizations, CPAT or any other organizations in the school, then those will have to be directed specifically to the Commission on Disability. And then from the Commission's on Disability perspective, as the chair of the Commission, I can reassign those to myself or to one of our members to work with the school department on. I don't think anybody has any questions about that, but it's still, it's a work of progress in discussion right now.
No.
Any thoughts? Kevin?
No.
Jen, any thoughts?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Next up is new library building committee.
So, with the new library building committee, the CPC, I believe, has received the initial eligibility application for that, the new library. They're now waiting to receive or have just received the application itself for the next meeting. The ADA component right now is an application being worked on with Jocelyn and myself and a couple of others with regard to an ask of up to $20,000. There are two specific figures. One is 10 and one is 20. You can ask for one or the other or potentially both, which means a total of 20. Jocelyn did an amazing job on the part of the application that she's completed already. And I have worked on the other part of the application, which I'll be sending out to her on Monday or Tuesday, along with letters that we need from different folks in the town, different departments and different organizations to support the process. So, that application has to begin by the 28th of this month. I think the goal will probably be to have it in about a week earlier or so and hopefully we will get approved for that. And actually, along those lines, I'm gonna request if we can go out of order for a minute. You guys just see under new business, there's a draft of a letter. I don't know if you see that.
Yes.
Yes.
Under new business. And that coincides with this application. So, somebody can make a motion to go out of order.
I don't think you need to go out of order. That just falls on the library building committee. So, I think.
Okay.
Just take it out on the whole business.
Okay. So, under old business, when we spoke last time, I asked everyone about, you know, I mentioned, I think, that I wanted to put together a letter that we would send to different departments in town. This is a draft of the letter. I don't know if anybody's really had a chance to read it. Yes, it's a little bit long. I don't dispute that at all. But I think it clearly explains what the ask will be for this grant application. But I wanted to get everybody's input. I'm waiting to hear from Jocelyn as well, but everybody's input about the letter. Any thoughts, positive, negative? If you've had a chance to look at it at all or if you need a couple minutes to look at it now.
I need to have a chance to look at it.
I did read it last night. Other than grammatical errors, it looks good. Okay. It's a draft. I'll take grammatical mistakes. No, it's funny. Well, because I know, like, so you're dictating, right? What were you typing?
I was typing, you were typing. And when I listened to it, I hear it and I don't know. Sometimes I'm spelling and things like that. It doesn't get things correct.
Well, one thing that was funny throughout the whole thing, "served" kept coming up, S-E-R-V, without the E. Really repeatedly, but I'm like, so, and me, because I'm like, you know, English language, it's not my strong suit. I'm like, I gotta Google this. Maybe like that's the version.
It's so consistent that it must be.
Yeah, maybe that's the version I was supposed to.
And spell check doesn't give.
Yeah, it's a choice. It's auditory sometimes.
So, but I think overall the contents of it was excellent. I think it had a lot of good input on how this would impact us, you know, from an ADA perspective.
Okay.
It was just literally, that was all.
Jen, did you get a chance to look at it?
I did, and it looks good to me. I had a couple of notations like Kevin said, but I think that was it. Just minor grammatical type things.
Okay. Do we need to read it out loud for anyone on my listening or should we just, are we good? I think we're okay. That's my opinion. Again, I want to get back from Jocelyn because there are a few other things to, she made one and there are a few changes too. And then grammatically, I will either have Jocelyn or my spouse look at it to fix it for the things that it doesn't tell me auditorily. And then send it out to all the members for a final review. My hope is that we can get this out by the first of the week. I want to be able to send this to each of the school librarians at the, at all three schools, to any group homes in the area potentially, who we can identify, group home administrators, to the board of health, to primetime, to the town administrator, to, you know, whoever, far and wide as they say, board of health, people who serve people with disability. Can lend their voice, veterans, the Veterans Affairs person to Ray. If anybody has any suggestions on what they should go, please let me know. Because the more we have responding to this, the better it is for the grant, which acts under Rubik's formula.
I'll send you Co-op CEO, his email, because he would like, if you're sending that out to like group homes and stuff like that, he would definitely be interested.
Thank you very much. And if you have any other group home administrators in the area.
Well, I have to think of like, Debbie Howell and with AHS.
Yeah, I don't know why. She works for a.
Yeah, Debbie, yeah, I can reach out to Debbie.
Associates, associates.
Associates for Human Services.
I'm sorry, what, Jen?
I was just saying Associates for Human Services.
Yes, I can reach out to Debbie also. I have her email, so I can do that tonight, in fact, and ask her if she would do it. I'm sure she would.
Because you're writing this on behalf of the Commission on Disability.
Yep.
Do we need to take a vote to accept this letter or at least accept?
Yes, that's actually the next thing I was going to talk to, to accept the draft, knowing that you will get a final copy too, at least approved first.
I will make a motion that we accept the library request letter draft with final revisions to be before submission.
I'll second that.
Nope, that's great. We have two seconds. So, we have a third, that means. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
And stepping down, Jonathan, aye. Thank you. Next.
It is setting up our new COD ADA webpage.
So, the reason I put that in there again like that is because I had mentioned last time that we wanted to redo, you know, do a full webpage to the town website and add things to it. Justina and I have a rough draft, which I didn't bring yet because I wanted to add some work to it, but a very rough draft of different types of resources and links we would like to put in there. But I wanted to ask each of the three of you and if there's any members of the public listening as well, if there are types of resources related to anything ADA, and I use that word loosely, anything ADA that you might think are important to put in as links and resources on our webpage. Is this gonna be links to everything from Veterans Affairs information in town, to social security information, to board of health information, to a specific group home information, to transition information for age 22, to resources for IEPs, for ISPs, for wheelchair services, for deaf, hard, and hearing impaired services, for technology services. There'll be a link to a section where we've already put together about 10 to 12 articles that we want to be able to put up there in post as well on different types of disability, disability state resources, disability state agencies. So, we're gonna put links to some of these resources and then within each resource, put a compendium of what, you know, might look like you're looking at a list of, you know, five or six or seven or eight things with each one. But I wanted to know if anybody has any specific ideas or put out there, if you could send it within the next two weeks or so, lists of any things that you think we should have or even just links. And then Justina and I can follow it and see where it goes and see if it's relevant. The only things that we're staying away from are private organizations that are doing solicitations of funds or trying to sell a service. I don't wanna, I don't feel as a, as a webpage for the town, we shouldn't be getting involved in anything that's a solicitation of funds to a private organization, the solicitation of services from a private organization.
So, I mean, you're gonna have the obvious MOD.
Yes, there's gonna be MOD.
This will be like a sub, like, we'll have like a tab that's helpful links, right?
Yes, it's gonna be, it's just helpful resources.
Okay.
And then when you go to the helpful resources, from there, there will be subcategories. You're correct, within the subcategories, there's state agencies. Go ahead, Jen.
I was just gonna ask, so like an organization like Community Autism Resources, is that something you would want to link to? Because they're based out of CCONC.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. Similar to that. So, you know, Community Autism Resources is similar to Mass Commission for the Line, but the local regional office phone number and contact. So, yes, and the same thing, you know, for an MOD or for a Mass Office of Deaf and Hard Hearing or, you know, Autism Resources, things like that, NABE, things like that as well. So, yes. So, the goal is to provide our residents of the town with as many recent sources as we can about different types of disability and where to find information about that as well. And that's gonna include transportation and medical resources. So, if somebody has an autistic family member or child, they'll know where to go. If they need information on transportation resources, they'll know where to go. We'll put links in there to apply for Mass Health, things like that as well. So, yes. So, this will probably be the last time I bring this up except to come back with a whole list of types of links that will be in there at our next meeting for everyone, for everyone to review so that, you know, nobody, I don't want anybody to get tired of hearing you saying this over and over. So, but I think we're almost there. So, anybody have any thoughts? Okay, we'll move forward then.
Continued conversation about ADA budget.
So, ADA budget is budget time of the year. It's a big one. There were a couple of things to think about here. So, there was a conversation to be had with the Mass Office of Disability about what the ADA coordinator's responsibility and role is in the town. And I've had that conversation with MOD and with our town administrator, Michael Mullin, as well. And I think in general terms, what we felt for now is that when we, the last conversation I had, as of this afternoon, actually, was that at this point in time, we are going to do our budget the way it was last year. So, this will be a level funded submitted budget this way. And then if there's going to be differences at all on how this is captured, how this is looked at, because there's the question potentially on what the role and responsibility is of the ADA coordinator and how the state visions the role versus what the town perceives the role to be. So, this may be something that first needs to be discussed more with the Board of Selectment and with the FINCOM. So, in the meantime, for now, as a placeholder, we are going to do our budget as submissions similar to the way it was last year. And that will actually make it, from our perspective, very, very easy to submit it. It's almost really a duplicate and just change in the years. I know there was some other discussion about how the budget would go and what the role and responsibility of the ADA coordinator would be. That still is somewhat to be defined going forward with potential for a budget change here. But I can't say anymore about it because I don't know more about what I can say until the discussion proceeds further. And if anybody wants to add to that, Kevin or you or Jen?
So, I want to add just real quick, I pulled up last year's budget. So, for last year, we had the ADA coordinator stipend at 3,000 and then we had 250 for professional technical, 250 for office supplies, and then 1,500 for other supplies, auxiliary aids. So, 2,000, a total budget of 5,000. And we talked about this very briefly last time. I mean, I personally feel that the conversation about Tom Blake's stipend versus our COD budget as we use it needs to be two separate conversations. But I want to make sure that that $2,000 figure, because I know we've started moving towards talking about trainings and things like that. I, we spent, of that 1,500, we sent 704, which I believe was on our mailer. So, that leaves us only 700, 800 bucks, like, if we wanted to do any trainings as a group or things like that. So, I just want to make sure that we're coddling. So, if we're gonna do level funding of both, both of these items, is, does the $2,000, is the $2,000 enough to support what the COD does separate from the stipend of the ADA coordinator?
Well, I think with regard to the statement to the ADA coordinator and this, the 250 for this year you're looking at, the 250 for the year that we're still in. And not, are you looking at, what year are you looking at the 250? Right. So, the previous year, that 250, the 1,500 was there.
Yeah.
The 3,000 was there. But it was allocated differently because we had a total of $1,000. You have 250 and 250. The previous year, we had a total of $1,000 versus that 500.
Okay.
So, we reduced our budget that already.
See, that's what this.
In '23.
This worksheet doesn't show that in private.
Right. That $1,500 figure, for example, is related to the administrative support that I receive through Justina.
Gotcha.
And so far this year, we've spent, I think it's $669 for quarter two. Quarter one, actually, she received some money directly from me, from the 3,000, what would be the $3,000. Yes, I can go back and ask the town for supplemental funding if it needs to be, but I understand in certain aspects, that's a difficult process. So, am I needing some of that? Yes, I would need some of that for Justina. And I'm being very frank about that. So, what we decided to do was for quarter two, we submitted our hours. There'll be hours for quarter three and hours for quarter four. I don't know if it'll lead up to all 1,500 dollars. We're not, we're kind of close to it. But the prior year, when we purchased those calendars, for example, okay, and did the mailer, that, that was done, excuse me, in the prior year.
Oh, that was '22.
Correct.
Okay.
So, that was based on the '22 budget. So, that's why, that's, this is why it's the way it is now.
I'm actually reading this wrong, yeah. So, the F, the F, it does give us our actual expenditures of FY '22, which shows that because we had 1,755 for professional technical. So, the mailers must have come out of that and then maybe something else.
Yeah, that was the mailer and the calendars. Okay. So, that's where that came from. And then as far as, again, as far as the coordinator's position, I think there's a question mark as the coordinator's position right now is sort of earmarked or is considered, quote, special employee, unquote, with regard to the town. And the position of the Commonwealth is that it should not be a special employee position, but it should be a dedicated position. And the amount of time and hours that the position requires and based on salary ranges is a separate issue. I did provide you all, I think, with what the salary ranges offered for the position should be for a town like this. Having said that, that's based on a full-time position. It's not based on a one quarter, one third, one half. It's based on a full-time range. So, again, this is a conversation to be had probably in the next couple of weeks between the town administrator, myself, FINCOM, and Board of Selectment. So, I don't think anybody has any other questions on that. Jen, if you're available to help me put a quick question together, since it's gonna be very similar perhaps over the weekend, so we can get it in early in the week?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Does anybody have any objection to what we're gonna be submitting for budgets?
So, you guys are gonna work on that, the budget worksheet together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think I forwarded that to all of you already anyway, what last year's was in the blank. You may remember where you from. So, if nobody has any objection, I'll entertain a motion to, to a budget that will be similar to last year's budget on behalf of COD.
I'll entertain that.
Go ahead, Nicole.
I just, I entertain that motion, aye.
So, how about, I'll say, Jen, you, Jen, you making the motion and then Nicole, you second?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
And Nicole, you'll second it?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any discussion on that from anybody else before we proceed? I think you need to provide some clarity that you're gonna, similar and level funded, I think, are two different things. So.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to create a budget on the zero budget sheet that reflects the needs of the commission based on last year's spending. Sound okay? Sorry. Do you need a transcript?
Who made, who made the original motion, Jen?
I did.
You want, I don't know if you want to draw that motion.
Do you want me to say it? I don't know how to.
Why, I'll be clear about. I don't want to draw that motion.
I withdraw that motion and instead I make a motion as stated by Jonathan.
Oh, now it doesn't mean it up. Ready? I want to make a, I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
I gotta wait. I'll, I'll make a motion that Jonathan and Jen work together to create the budget worksheet based on level funding of for FY '24.
I'll second that.
Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Jen? Okay. All right. Is there any, any discussion?
No, we haven't seconded.
Okay. No, we haven't seconded, the call station's seconded.
Did you second it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know.
What do you think?
So, the only discussion I will add to the conversation is to say that, to be clear, at this time, we are submitting this budget based on the motion that was made. And that there is still further discussion going on to define the role and responsibility of the ADA coordinator and how that fits so that part of this may be subject to change, but it won't be by us. It would be by FINCOM and the boss. I just want to make sure that we get that out there for the record. Any other discussion, thoughts? Hearing none, I will, I will call for, oh?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Stepping down, Jonathan, aye. Couldn't have any mistakes. Thank you all very much.
Sorry, Jen, I just like, you know, I like to use like short hands and I was like, I can't shorthand that motion up.
I'll keep that in mind. I'll make my motions really long and wordy.
No, I already got it off of that with Jonathan on this and CPC.
Welcome back, Jen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And next?
Healing Community Study.
So, the reason I put Healing Community Studies on there was simply to ask you, Nicole, the best way for me, I reached out to Karen a couple of times by my own email, you know, through the town. And I've gotten a direct response back. I've also reached out because they put some of the stuff through Boston Medical Center.
Yes, that's who's running it.
I can't log into that system. It's not accessible. And I've also reached out to BCH, to the person, well, you just, BCH, and let them know that I can't log into them and ask them to contact me directly.
Okay.
And I'm not getting a response back. I don't know if you have any other ideas or thoughts, but I can just hear.
No, I can reach out to Karen, but it's, it's in a weird spot right now. Now that we don't have, um, his name was Nate and he was the coordinator.
He's good, yeah.
And he was excellent at getting ahold of everyone. And so now if Karen's stepping in for the, until we get a new, um, whatever his title was.
And I felt really bad about it, especially because last week, the day that I got back from Idaho, there was a seminar for ADA coordinators specifically. And I had reached out to, to both folks, Karen and I forget who it is, at Boston Medical Center a couple of times, can you call me or send me some, some other way so that we can work this out and, you know, such and such? And didn't hear anything back. I really wanted to join that. And then I simply reached out and asked if there's a recording of it, and I haven't heard back.
And I, I even struggled with, so ever since Nate left, they started using that, whatever that email system is.
It's that portal system.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of that because I like to have all my emails within my one box. And now it is a circle box and I don't understand it and I can't get to it unless they send it to me. So, yeah, I had challenges with that one as well. So, I'll reach out to Karen.
So, what this is, if you could, for taking a minute and share with Jen what this is so that Jen knows because she's new to hearing this one.
So, Jen, as the public health nurse, I was involved in opioid coalition out of New Bedford. From there, I was contacted by Boston Medical Center, who was doing a study with Berkeley, Freetown, and Dayton. And we were the rural side of the study. And they are implementing different opioid harm reduction interventions into the communities. So, I've been working on it as the public health nurse. And I didn't really think about it until something had come up that drug addiction is considered a disability. And then I brought Jonathan on board because I thought that he would be very helpful in some of our interventions. So, so far, we've allocated money to different things. I don't know if you're familiar with Envision Farm. It's in Berkeley. We're gonna have a drop-in center there where folks will come looking for resources. That will be manned by Star out of Fall River. And from there, we haven't started anything else. And I've been a little distance from it just the last month because I'm finishing up my degree. So, I haven't been able to attend the meetings. But I'm hoping it, it gets back on track. And because we lost whoever our coordinator was, two things have been a little up in the air. I think that's all I have. All right. If you have any questions, you can let me know.
Any thoughts, Jen? Did you hear what you heard?
Yeah, my sound went out for a little bit, but I did hear. That sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
Nicole, what do you need for support on that?
As of right now, I can't think of anything. As we start to like implement actual interventions, and I was supposed to get this week, I was actually supposed to have a meeting this week to kind of see, as a public health nurse, what exactly my role is with the community. I had to cancel that meeting, but I will be having that. And once I have a better idea, I'm understanding what I'm supposed to do, then I can see what I can allocate to other departments and stuff like that.
Awesome. Yeah, keep me in the loop. I'd be happy to support however I can.
Thank you.
You're gonna find somebody. It's better not to turn to the best buddies to point out.
It, it feels like it is. It really does.
But, you know, I feel like some of these things that it's not because we don't want to be involved. And it's not because, you know, we're not trying to reach out, whether it's you, myself, Kevin, I'm sure Jen, now that she's, she's with us and stuff too. And it's not because, you know, we're not trying to reach out, whether it's you, myself, Kevin, I'm sure Jen, now that she's, she's with us and stuff too. Um, or because we're getting affirmation from members of the community. It's because the resources seem to be just in flux right now. And it's, I think the important thing we all know too is it's the nature of the beast. When you work with nonprofits in different situations, there's a lot of turnover. And sometimes there's a lot of minutia that gets in the way. I'll just leave it like that.
It just takes the littlest thing to throw things off and then it's all.
It's all.
Well, it's probably a real similar situation to just like what we see in town with committees and commissions. It's like the same group of people are trying to do these things.
Yeah.
And, you know, just stuff, stuff happens, whether it's personal or just you lose your mind because the stuff can drive you nuts sometimes.
Yep, for sure.
Disappear.
Nicole, next in?
Um, Dayton Main Street, um, roadway and sidewalk, I don't know.
Okay, so the Williams and Main Street poll process and sidewalk process, um, we all know, if we've been over there or shown down there, it's in, it's in progress, where they water, water sewage now. They're gonna start doing the poll side of it, um, probably in the very near future. The last email that I had talked about staking up with the engineers, the last few days where the polls are actually gonna go. The involvement that the ADA had in this, um, I will say was, came about, just to, to recap again for Jen too. Remember, that's a long stretch. It's an almost two-mile stretch of road. And this came about a couple of months ago when one of the Board of Selectmen's meeting, I think it's about three or four months, about three and a half months ago. One of the members of Board of Selectmen asked if the ADA coordinator had been discussed or consulted on this project, and the answer was no. So, once I got involved in looking at the project with the town, with, with our highway department and with National Grid as well, what became clear was that the original engineering proposal for where these polls were gonna go, in terms of where the sidewalks were gonna go, were not gonna be compliant. And what that could have meant, if we're frank about it, was that the town could have spent a significant amount of money to have this project done and have the polls moved or redone. And then after the fact, if a complaint came in, the town could have, or, um, the engineering company, or National Grid, could have been on the hook to have to redo the project. And that could have resulted in years of delay and who knows how much money or millions of dollars wasted. So, as a result of the work that I was able to, to do with, and it wasn't heavy work, it was just redoing the work, with the highway department, um, and with the town administrator, and with the engineers, and with the surveyors, and with National Grid. The way the project is going now is the sidewalks have all been relocated to some extent. So they're now instead of being along the edge of the road, there's gonna be a strip in between the edge of the road and the sidewalks. The most, most of the poles where they can will now be placed behind the sidewalk, which means not along the edge of the road. Which in the end, oddly enough, I have to say, for National Grid, is a much cleaner, safer, less expensive way for them to be doing anything. Not to mention the fact, from their perspective, these poles are now safer because there's less risk of cars losing control and ever hitting a, hitting a telephone pole or light pole, whatever they're used for. So, there are a few spots where, uh, the, the sidewalk still has to remain the way it was. And then the other side of it was, by redoing this, we've recalculated the parameters that are gonna be used for all of the street crossings. So where we're gonna have the rail paths, we're gonna go to metal rail paths as opposed to plastic rail paths that were used on some other streets in the town because they hold up much better as well and can't crack or falter by cars taking sharp corners. So, we're gonna go to the rail paths that are, as I said, that are metal. They're larger, they're wider. The, um, they're gonna be straight on, they won't have any angles or curvatures to them. But also, just as important now, where the poles are placed, they're gonna be placed further back from each of the intersections so that whether it's a car turning, or a pedestrian in a wheelchair, or someone with a baby carriage, there's not gonna be a clear sight of view for all of these intersections. Um, so that project was restated a few days ago. Depending upon how the weather goes now, uh, National Grid will probably start doing the project within the next, probably within the next two weeks. Um, and the project will probably go for a couple of months. They, they mentioned the other day the project could go anywhere from three to five months totally. Um, but that, you know, after the polls are done, the next thing will be to get the sidewalks laid down. So, that's a long, roundabout way to give the update, but I don't know if anybody has any questions about that or not. Jen, any questions?
None from me, thanks.
Okay, and the next item?
Um, okay, this was the, um, the draft letter. That's the one we, right?
Yep.
Okay, um, so we're on to new business, um, consumer services update.
So, again, this is the third month now providing a consumer service update for private asks in the town. The past month, um, there were, I think, three asks. One ask was to help, uh, a resident who was a shut-in arrange for services and resources that they needed in their home for pharmaceutical delivery. That's not something I could do directly, but I was able to put them in touch with the right folks through their pharmacies, who were able to set them everything up through their pharmacies and through Medicare. Um, again, that's not something that the ADA coordinator can do directly. It's more of a resource type of, type of a question. The second question related to, um, group homes in the area for an individual who has a specific need and is roughly about forty years old. And again, that was referring to the, the appropriate state agencies to get what they needed and then seeing that the family also had assistance to do all of the paperwork involved and so forth, so that they can arrange that for their family member. And the, um, third item altogether was arranging similar to, these things to be kind of a, um, a standard these days because transportation is such an issue, was arranging transportation with, um, a person who is wheelchair-bound and has, um, some paralysis as well and needs to be transported back and forth into Boston for medical treatment for a specific issue. And the problem with that was that the medical treatment had to be done, um, because it's a matter in this case of life and death and treatment times for this person. But that the medical transportation company, Catra, has not had enough drivers, let alone vehicles, for transporting people who have specific extra needs for wheelchair services. So, we were able to contract with a separate company from Catra to arrange for those services that were granted Catra has from United Way. Those three individuals alone, just to give an idea of general time, or just to work with those particular items alone, not doing anything else, probably took a total of about sixteen hours for the month. And I say that only because I think it's important for all of us to recognize the amount of time that some things take to, to, to get going, all the phone calls, all the emails, all the whatever that go back and forth. So, that's the consumer update. Jen, you have any hand up for something, or did you just click that?
No, I did have my hand up. Um, I just wanted to say, unfortunately, I think I have to jump off a little bit early today. So I wanted to check in to see if there was anything else that needed my vote before I jumped off, and I apologize.
I don't think that there's anything there that else that's gonna require a vote.
Just, just minutes.
Just, just minutes, but, um, I don't think you can vote on the minutes because.
Yeah, I wasn't officially part last meeting anyway.
So I would say no.
Okay, alright, thank you. I'm so sorry to, I will be in person next month and thereafter.
That sounds awesome, thank you. And I will be in touch with you tomorrow or later. I'll shoot you a text or email so we can just coordinate a few minutes of time.
Perfect, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, I'm good.
So, I just realized, and this is kinda comical, but I don't know where the screen is. So every time, because the speaker is to my left, like, well, that's where it's, oh, I always look to the left, like I'm looking at the screen. So if anybody's still with us on screen, I'm looking. Um, next?
Um, I did have a question that kinda goes into consumer report. I know that the, it'd be certain things are hip or whatever. But I did receive from, um, Hudson aging, they had, um, some kind of grant that they were asking, I don't know if it was, yeah, or what it was. But it was in regards to, um, vaccinations and it looked like it was for homebound folks. And I didn't know if we had a great, a big enough need for that, for that to be something that they should be pursuing.
So the answer is, um, if there is some kind of demand for homebound vaccinations potentially, they should also let me know.
Mm-hmm.
And I haven't received anything yet from them about that, but I can reach out, so now it's on my radar.
Well, I can read it back over and then if I feel like it's, if that's what it's looking for, um, I can, I can forward it to you and I can just include them in it that I forwarded it to you. Because it, it does cover like regular vaccination and I don't really see the need for us to get any kind of coverage for that because we have an external company that comes and does it and then it just fills people's, um, insurance.
I think the only, the only thing I will say to you is that, depending upon the kind of vaccination,
Mm-hmm.
maybe yes, maybe no. Um, one of the things that we need to be doing more of is putting together our list of self-identified individuals in the town and then their need of service based on whether they're a shut-in or not.
Mm-hmm.
And that's behind, um, for a whole variety of, of different reasons in different departments. And that needs to be coordinated more. Um, that's something that, that I need to be working on too with, with the fire chief and the police chief and ultimately with the Board of Health too.
Mm-hmm.
And I say that because if you think about when we had COVID, we arranged for quite a number of residents who were shut-ins to have direct services so that they could get their vaccinations. Or get them out somehow through, you know, different ambulatory services to get to a location for their vaccinations and then be brought back home. So, is there, is there a need, I guess the answer is it depends on the kind of vaccinations up here. If it's talking about flu and chingles, I don't know if that would constitute a need through ADA necessarily, unless it's a product service that's being provided through the Board of Health to provide flu within an ADA. So, for example, we do the flu later. If there are residents who are shut-ins, and I think you and I have, have put it out there in the past couple of years, if there are residents who are shut-ins who need to avail themselves of that flu vaccination when it's done at Town Hall, um, at Old Town Hall to let us know, I haven't had anybody reach out to me directly for those specific dates and say, I, I want a flu vaccination and a shut-in.
Well, I, I would send them an update that the flu vac, like that clinic is coming up.
Well, did, when that happened last year, I think it was posted on the town website that the vaccination, remember that people were signing up for the schedule on Saturday?
Right, how many people that are shut-ins are going on the town website?
Well, and that's exactly.
Yeah, we're driving around town seeing it on Saturday.
Exactly, so the question separately is how the word gets out to people.
Mm-hmm.
And whether the word to potentially get out to people would come from the Board of Health who connect, can identify shut-ins or potentially prime time, or the Veterans Agent, or the ADA Coordinator, all of the above.
I think that probably the easiest way to resolve that issue is if, I mean, they may not wanna do it, but if you get the people that identify as shut-ins to sign up for Code Red and then have Code Red put it out.
That's what we're trying to do.
That, that would be like the easiest way. It's like you're not gonna sit there and say, I mean, even if it's ten people, it's trying to get in touch with ten.
Yeah.
And then that Code Red component also gets involved and, you know, obviously they can put people on the emergency prepared list.
Right.
For vaccinations or for, you know, if there's a flood in the area, for example, shut areas, there's flooding and people have to be removed from their homes. You know, special rotations have to be made. So, that's part of that as well, as far as the emergency preparedness goes too. So, there's so many, I think there's different parts of what this process is in terms of whose responsibility is. I think in the past, what we've seen is that there are some departments in the town who have lists of residents who have disability who weren't, who weren't sharing with other departments that need to know. And, you know, my hope is that over time that will change and get better, um, understanding the requirements and regulations and procedures. You know, that's, I think that's gonna be a little bit of a work in progress, but I think we're getting there.
Okay, I'll, yeah, I'll revisit that because I, when I initially, well, I got it a while ago, to be quite honest. It was around Christmas break. Um, but I just didn't see it as something that was necessary. And now my time that I've been spending with a home health nurse and I see how many in-home vaccinations she does.
Yep.
I'm just surprised. I figured at this point, folks that were going to get the COVID vaccine would have already gotten it at this point and there wouldn't be so, but, um, even the flu, so, um, they're out of the flu right now, um, but even before that flu, the in-home, so I didn't realize.
Well, some of the COVID stuff, um, you know, even for the, the boosters, for example,
Mm-hmm.
I may still arrange for some of those boosters, um, for different, for, for different residents in town. There were other residents in town who were asking for it before and were calling different departments or BOH before you were involved in it. And the information wasn't being passed along to me, being frank about it.
Mm-hmm.
So if it wasn't passed along to me, there was nothing I could do. And I think if it's generally looking at helping to identify residents in the town who need vaccinations for different reasons, because they're shut-ins, um, I would suggest that at some point maybe it's a conversation with my role as a, as the coordinator, certainly for the commission, you as the nurse. And then maybe, you know, the other folks in town who potentially have people on their list who have disability and they're shut-ins, we should get together in that conversation.
Okay.
So I think it's, the conversation is just to start, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yes, thank you.
You did mention Christmas break, you.
Well, it was someone's Christmas break. I was getting emails about vaccinations.
Yeah.
And this is not great.
Um, okay, last part, I forgot the word. Um, new ADA MOD coordinator.
Right. So, one of the things that's occurred recently is, um, is there another, I guess that, um, I've been asked and tasked to take on, not through the town directly, but I think it's important that we've been asked, is the Mass Commission on Disabilities, MOT again, um, is trying to put together a statewide consortium of all of the ADA coordinators around the state, whether they be, uh, employees of a town, whether they be commission members, to, to develop standards and best practices. And, um, I have been asked, I'm, as the ADA coordinator for Dayton, to spearhead this with, um, General Counsel of Mass Office for Disability, along with, um, the ADA Policy Center and the New England ADA Center Director, and also Mary McCollie, who was the commissioner of MOT. So the four of us together are starting this process of working to develop best practices and standards for ADA coordinators throughout the Commonwealth and Mass. And whether we develop a standard of practice that ADA coordinators will need to take through testing, if you will, or certification. And I use that word loosely because this is not about college credits and so forth, but it's about education of the dues and the trust holders of ADA coordinator. Um, or whether we look at the national best practices for ADA coordinators and a combination of both as it relates to Massachusetts and our, and our laws. We've just started this process and our hope within the next year is to be able to start to put together regional seminars or workshops around the Commonwealth. And also to look at what's the difference with smaller towns like ours and the ADA need versus larger cities like Thomas and Austin, who have full-time coordinators, sometimes two or three coordinators or departments, and their needs. And what are the differences and how can we meet the needs of rural communities versus just the cities? Um, and ultimately, the goal is to bring in MMA, which is Massachusetts Municipal Association. Because right now, they don't have a big role in the ADA and it's really because, um, they look at that as expenditures as opposed to all the money it grants that ADA can bring into the town. So it's a different, you know, it's kind of a different animal to start educating and we wanna start doing that too. But I just wanted to let you guys know that we just started this process literally a week and a half ago.
Okay.
Um, and this is gonna be pretty actively ongoing.
That sounds similar to what you do for the Association of Public Nurses, like Mike does it with TAs.
Yes.
I'm surprised that, that you guys, this isn't already a thing.
Yeah.
To, it seems like it does a group or.
I, I think there are a whole lot of different political reasons why it's never occurred and I don't think it's because of anybody not wanting to, regardless of which side of the world you're on. I think it's really because it's just never been fully addressed before and the resources haven't been before. Uh, but now there's, there is the mindset of different people that really, it's important that we all come together. You know, we need to be able to identify collectively, looking at, you know, areas around here, what is the responsibility of coordinators? What do we need? How can we work together for collective grants, things like that?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
Well, if we had been like decent meals and bottles of wine, we'd watch out, so I'm not trying to take you.
Shut up. Yeah, well, it's funny because I also, I did ask the MOT, uh, commissioner, you know, if we do this and we have, you know, we're setting up regional meetings around the state, do, do we have room to rent space? Is there money in the state budget to rent space? And the answer I got is, well, we have money for coffee and donuts. By any, but, but our meetings are gonna have to be in local libraries, community centers, things like that, because our budget is very tight at the state level. They have one, MOT has one of the tightest budgets that any state agency can have. So, shocker. Go figure. But it's also a huge amount of money out there for rent. So, next?
Um, coordinated human services transportation.
So, another thing that our town is getting involved in now is Serpent, um, potentially is looking at a lot of fifty-three-ten grant money that might be becoming available specifically for transportation services and resources. And this kind of falls into you too, perhaps through the Department of Health.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and Andrea, I forget her last name off the top of my head, um, from Serpent is the person who is coordinating this and reached out because they wanna be able to identify what are the needs of our seniors, what are the needs of our people with disability in town who need medical transportation, who need transportation to go shopping, who need transportation to go to whatever. So, um, we are having our first full meeting with different towns next Thursday, actually, on the night. via Zoom, just to begin the process of conversation. And to begin to identify the different types of grants that will be out there. So this affects everything from not just our current residents who are in the town and might have need for different type of transportation who have disability. But it affects future residents and for example, housing, because this looks at all of the aspects. So it looks at the potential for future residential housing or seniors housing or disability housing. And how does that impact transportation and what do you need? So, just as a thought process, for example, we have a veterans van, but we don't have a driver, unless it's the veterans agent or something. Well, perhaps a grant could be had to hire a driver and that grant might potentially be a consortium with another town. So it could be another town splitting the, the cost or the value of the grant that we would get to hire a driver at the appropriate rate and for scheduling so that that van could potentially be available to veterans and seniors and people with disability on a full-time basis. But again, that will all be through a grant process. And I'm just throwing this out there as a concept. It doesn't mean it's what it's gonna be. But, um, again, it's one more thing that the town of Dayton's gonna get involved in because it makes a huge difference for our seniors and people with disability.
Well, I mean, how, how about, I'm just, how long has Mr. Ferry been asking to establish an accessible bus stop at Lincoln Village?
Exactly. And this, and this is one of those things to be looking at. So ultimately for me to do this, I'm, again, I'm gonna be reaching out to you as the, as the Board of Health Chair and as the nurse, and I'm gonna be reaching out to Mr. Ferry to see what he can identify. I'm gonna be reaching out to Ray, I'm gonna be reaching out to Laura primetime. But it involves bringing everyone in.
In the housing authority.
In the housing authority. Everybody has their own constituency. In order for me to put all the numbers together, it's important to, to recognize who the constituency is. I think what, I'll say this because I think this is what people don't realize very quickly, just simple numbers. The number of people in, in Dayton who identify, and remember this is officially identified, in the most recent census information is having a disability who want to be self-identified. Overall, in Dayton, believe it or not, is ten point one percent. Which means you're talking over eight hundred residents now have self-identified. Ten years ago, that was like four percent. So it's a huge jump. And that also, remember, you have more seniors now too, okay? If you look at the school system, and I can show you where this information comes from, but if you look at the school system, the high school is showing, referencing roughly sixteen percent of the children having self-identified as having a disability. We know where the school budget goes. We all know that's an issue. But then you get to the elementary level and the number of children who are self-identified by their families or the school system has a disability is twenty-two percent. Twenty-two, one out of every five kids. So, you know, think of those kids in five or six or seven or eight years if they're still residents of Dayton's and now they've reached adulthood. Twenty-two percent, potentially, self-identified officially. So what I'm getting at is the numbers for all of these things are going up, they're not going down. Percentages are going up, they're not going down, of course. So the types of resources that the town needs to think about providing are gonna become significantly more enhanced over time. That's my speech. I'm sticking to it. But, any thoughts, either of you, or?
Nope.
No, I just think that was like the only thing, just thinking about things that matter, which we've been talking about for years and just disregarded is.
I think, you know, my personal opinion, and I, I don't know if either of you would agree, is that I think the town is beginning to recognize the needs for different types of services that we haven't had before. Some of the services are all overdue, other services are finished or, oh, the services are simply not happening because we all know the dollars aren't there. And, yeah. We're all gonna be in that position. I'm getting older. I'm sixty-eight as of today. Happy birthday.
Oh.
Happy birthday.
So.
I was gonna have a big cable cupcake and I literally got out of work four minutes before I went to jail. Luckily I was working at Arujos. I was like, oh, God, I gotta get Jonathan.
Yeah, but, but you know what I'm, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You know, um, yeah. By the way, I didn't see my shadow today. Sorry. Next.
So it's the, the, um, the library, um.
Yeah, I didn't put it in.
Yeah, okay. I'm like, am I, is it everyone? Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna go past that one and we're gonna review and approve minutes for one five two thousand twenty-three.
Yes, I listened to the minutes. Thank you very much again for doing them.
Yes, thank you.
Much appreciated. I don't have anything at all to say about the minutes. So when we have an objection, I will make a motion, step down and make a motion to approve the minutes for one five two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Period none, Kevin? Aye, co?
Aye.
Jonathan stepping down. Aye, thank you very much. Prove unanimously. Next thing?
Public input.
Do we have anybody still on Zoom with us? Mr. Woods.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh, how you doing, Jonathan? I just want to thank you all for all the fine work that you do. And I see the importance of it. Mainly I zoomed in today because I wanted to ask you about the elevator in Town Hall and the railings for the walkway.
So, two entirely separate things, but let me, let me tell you where the railings stand for the walkway is, I have to circle back with Mike and with Jim, Billy, Commissioner, and Town Administrator on the railings part of it. There were some designs that were submitted on the railings for the walkway and some cost estimates, cost estimates for the railing of the walkway. Those have to be reviewed and I think still approved. And then once they're approved, the money is allocated for that, I believe. I may be wrong on that, so I don't want to speak out of turn. It's not nearly as expensive as I thought it would, which is great. But having, having said that, I think it's hopefully the railings will be in within the next few months. With regard to an elevator for Town Hall, that's a whole different ballgame. In order for an elevator to go to Town Hall, the first question is where do you put it? And we have this discussion, you know, in the past, a few different places where an elevator might go for, for, for people to get, obviously access, you know, the first floor during versus the lower level. But having, having said that, an elevator, minimal cost for an elevator space is probably gonna be a few hundred thousand dollars. They're not getting creative the whole process and then all the dick involved, changing the structural, you know, component of the building as to where you go. Do you expand something? Do you not expand something? Do you take space away from an office area? And then what's the access points gonna be? So, there has been discussion about that. Woody, I think that's probably the bigger picture over time overall of whether or not Town Hall got an overhaul on whether there's another floor added or it's expanded outward and how. Would I love to see an elevator as the ADA coordinator and as a person with a disability? Yes, I would. Um, is it overdue? Yes, it is. But is it on the plans right now? No.
Okay, well, I just wanted to follow up with that. I will, um, put a bug in your ear every now and then about it.
Actually, you did put a bug in my ear, so I will make an inquiry about both of those questions and at our next meeting, whether you're locked on or not, I will have an answer for you on both of those questions as to where things stand. And if I see you in the meantime or talk to you in the meantime, I will also update you. But I will update the public on both of those questions at the next meeting.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much and y'all have a wonderful evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Um, so, next is the second, next remaining dates.
And I think I have them there.
Yes, I, I can't make May fourth. I'm gonna be at the Public Health Nurse Conference.
No, you're not.
So I'll think of you guys.
You're, you're gonna be here with, with the line.
Yeah.
With the line. Where is the conference? Maybe we want to go?
It's in Marlboro this year.
It's in Massachusetts.
Yeah, it's, it's always in Mass.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Well, we should be okay as long as Jen can make it.
Yeah, you'll have a core, so I just wanted to let you know that.
All right, thank you very, very much. Appreciate that. Anything else? Anybody wants to bring up anything? Any thoughts? I know I put on things for the business, but do either of you have any business?
No, so actually just a quick recap. So Nicole and I, you know, were talking about best money stuff, about redoing the Facebook pages and different approaches. That's still stuff that I'm, I'm gonna get on, get a little swamped because.
Well, I stayed on it there, it's funny, but I still haven't gotten anything for a quarry or.
You didn't get?
I didn't get anything further.
You know what? I did get it the very next day. I'm looking forward to you tonight.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't, you know.
Yeah, because I went on and did mine and it was pretty quick.
I didn't put in for my yet, to be honest with you, because I was so sick.
All right, okay, keep me up.
I don't want it to fall apart.
But, but, but I do have it, so I look forward to you tonight.
Okay, yes, I appreciate that. Cause I, I'd like to get done, because I got right on there. I had to stuff it up a little bit.
They sentenced me and I was like on my phone. I'm like, I'm gonna do it on my phone because otherwise. Well, unfortunately, what seems to happen though is like, I honestly, I just don't know what the time is because I'm at home, what meeting am I in? It's like, it seems like, like, and I tried to do it on my phone and it wouldn't work. And then what happens is I get sidetracked. And then when I'm working with Christina sometimes, I have to go down this list of things we're doing where I forward her things ahead of time. And if I don't forward it to a right hand, it'll put it, it's outside of line. So, yeah, that's my excuse. Yeah, so we've kind of coordinated a little bit there with how we, we want to move forward. So we're gonna keep just rolling with that.
Do you have, have you guys actually been able to come up with some ideas yet, or?
Well, we're just kind of off back like what we think we need to do as far as revamp, like redoing the Facebook page. Just like we created, I, I originally created it as like a private group. Um, so it's like impossible to share some links to it. We did get the new links to sign up so we can, once I get that done, we can use that link to get people to.
Yeah, because once we redo the Facebook page and, um, then have like a private group, then I redo the flyer to reflect. It's because those QR codes are probably not correct anymore. To recap them, redo the flyer, so that we can start to just sharing them again, yeah.
Speaking of FB, I did notice today that you had posted our meeting today on the FB page.
Today?
Yes, so thank you very much for doing that.
So quick too, while with us, just want to make this as brief as possible.
Yep.
We've been talking about using Facebook Live. So I went through and I re-read, I thought I haven't already read it ten times since I've started this stuff, open meeting laws. So, ourselves, we all know that we have to participate with at least one of us in person. We can participate remotely. The open meeting laws don't pertain to public participation. So say if we wanted to utilize Facebook Live and say Mr. Woods came on through Facebook Live, he totally could participate. We just couldn't do it as part of the, the, you know, the commission. So, but we have to participate either via the Zoom link or in person, but we can totally use. We can do it every night. I, I, I read, we could, you know, like, so next, so for the next meeting, we can set it up so that we'll, you know, we can run the Zoom link through the TV and then I can use my computer and we can go Facebook Live and I can just keep an eye on chat. If somebody wants to, you know, talk, we can allow them to talk. Or actually, I think we'd strictly be chat on Facebook Live, but we can certainly entertain, you know, chat questions. I just think that, like, it's gotta be the easiest way to get more public engagement. Because like I was saying, I mean, it shows tonight, so Mr. Woods jumped on the Zoom because he had something he wanted to say pertaining to.
I think he was on Facebook and saw your post and that's where he jumped on.
Did you, Woody? Was it my Facebook post dragged you in here?
Excuse me?
Was it my Facebook post that got you on tonight?
No, no, I didn't even notice that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, is like they're participating because like they want to be or they need to be at that meeting. That's the only people that are using Zoom. So it's like, if we want to create outside engagement, it's, we'll just use.
And I, and I, and, and I similarly took a conversation that we've had. I did reach out to just to make sure under open meeting law, because there's different parameters as well, um, to MOD and MOD said absolutely. Similar to what you just said, but they also said the same thing.
Good to know that.
So, yeah. Well.
I'm happy we got a second opinion.
Yeah, but, but I think it's good to have a second opinion, just to be, to be.
Well, to be fair, I mean, we, we had, I had asked several times for.
Speaking of, but, but going along with those things, so I need to kind of show, I'm sorry, just want to get to go along with those things with MOD said they're gonna be doing a few days ago. And Woody, I think you'll like this too, is they're going to be holding workshops to educate all towns, employees, commissions, committees. And notice the word I said, all towns in Massachusetts. I'm using the open meeting law and all of the different platforms for disabilities. So it's gonna be FB, how to use YouTube, how to use, uh, open source information, how to use closed captioning, how to use sign language interpretation, all these various things for people with disabilities so that anytime in the future, as once they start this, when there are gonna be meetings that are gonna be open to the public remotely, once you've gone through the training, it's gonna be expected that you'll be able to utilize these resources. Doesn't mean there'll be additional expenses, but all of these different resources, such as transcription information that comes down below somewhere close caption. All of those things will be available and they want to teach different departments and towns how to use it. That's gonna be their big push for the next fiscal year. So, stay tuned because I'm sure we will be, as a commission, learning that and asking all of the different departments and employees in towns who use the information sources to log in and learn the same information. Yeah, that's all I did. That's all I got. Nicole, anything else?
Nope.
It is now trustee vote? Uh, it's not coming. Five forty-one PM, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Step you down? Any discussion? Woody, can we adjourn?
Good night, you guys. Have a nice dinner.
Thank you. Here we go. Aye, co?
Aye.